...of the United States of America and as we the Republic of which Samans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Twenty-first day of April. Start our council name.
Fisher Brown.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
Wyatt.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Mathelak.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
Grant.
Aye.
May I have somebody approve the minutes?
They approve both? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve two seven minutes, one from April seventh people by city council regular meetings, and then also a copy of the Monday, the April thirteenth, joint meeting with the Harbor Commission and master of plan advisory committee.
Second. Goldwing.
Fisher Brown.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Mathelak.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Grant.
Aye.
The council table.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the council table as presented. I'll sign that.
Goldwing.
Sparks.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Mathelak.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Grant.
Aye.
Fisher Brown.
Yes.
Under special orders, item A, Neighbors for Kids, a new hospital in 21163, David Bigelow.
Here.
If you give us your name and address for the record.
I'm David Bigelow, I'm the CEO of Samaritan Pacific Communities Hospital in Newport. And thank you, Mayor, councilor, for your time today. I thought I'd just cover a few points about the bond measure that are many of them answered in the frequently asked questions that I just passed out. But one of the things that we've learned in talking to people in several communities is just to kind of recap the relationship between the Pacific Communities Health District and Samaritan Health Services. First of all, the Health District, it was established in nineteen seventy-two. The hospital in Newport was created back in the late forties when a group of citizens joined together, raised some funds, and built the original Pacific Communities Hospital and opened in nineteen fifty-three. The Health District came along by vote of the community, established in nineteen seventy-two, and in seventy-six, the community supported the addition of the hospital of what we call the money swing on the south end, a general obligation bond at that time. In nineteen eighty-six, a second general obligation bond was passed by the community, and that created the building that we refer to as the eighty-eight building, you may know it as a two-story brick where we house our patients now and many of our services. Also, in the early eighties, there was a Health District in Toledo, and when that hospital closed, that Health District dissolved, and it's not been part of our district since then. The Pacific Communities Health District extends from the Ahots to the middle of Lincoln Beach, so Dico Bay and points north are included in the Health District. The current measure is to replace the hospital. Current square footage, all in, is about eighty-eight thousand square feet. The plan would create a hundred twenty-one thousand square feet. Most of that is new construction. We are going to retain the eighty-eight building and repurpose that for services while the newer section will be used to house patients, surgery, ED, radiology, and clinics. The clinic space alone is growing from twenty-three thousand square feet to thirty-three thousand square feet, and we need that to house, to office more physicians, more healthcare providers so we can see more patients. Today, with limited space for providers, wait times are much longer than we want them to be, and we seek to resolve that with more space and recruitment of providers. Other services are expanding, some are new services. We're adding radiology services that will assist in the detection of cancer, both bone, perhaps cardiology issues, all of that through what we call the treatment medicine. Again, back to talking about the relationship between the district and Samaritan. In two thousand and two, the Health District entered into a thirty-year affiliation agreement with Samaritan Health Services. So Samaritan Health became the operator, kind of like the tenant in the building. The district retained ownership of it, had funded about five million dollars' worth of projects, smaller projects over these years. Samaritan has funded about eleven million dollars of equipment acquisition that's gone into that space. Should this bond measure be passed, we have budgeted an additional ten million dollars to again equip the new space. And maybe I'll stop and see what questions you might have, whether you respect your time.
Yes.
I'd like to know, well, first of all, I'd like to go on record as saying that I think this is a necessary thing. I'd like to know if the measure passes in the new facility or if the additions to the facility, if the improvements are made, is this going to be able to enhance care here at the coast so there'll be fewer trips to Corvallis or to other facilities for services that are currently unavailable here?
That's definitely a goal, and how that would come about, first of all, capacity. Without the space to house more physician practices, we're unable to bring more to the community. With the additional space, not only would we be able to bring more primary care practitioners, but also specialists. Right now, our cardiologists come one day a week, they want to go to two, they think ultimately they'll be at four. We're recruiting urologists presently, we're recruiting dermatology presently, we're recruiting in all the primary care physicians, and the availability of those services will reduce the need to go to the clinic for other services, yes.
That question, how are you recruiting them and how are you going to retain them if the hospital bond does not pass?
Well, we will recruit as best we can. Certainly, the building is a recruitment tool or aid. That's been shown and repeated in other projects like this over the years in different communities. The newer facility is what people like and are attracted to, but certainly, this community offers a lot to people who want to come here, the lifestyle, the rural aspect. But the building would help. What we would do if it doesn't pass, we just keep recruiting. We may have to just simply build a freestanding medical office building, which isn't as efficient for the staff or the patient staff to be in one building, go to that and get into another building for services.
I represent the city with the Mental Health Advisory Committee, and there's been lots of discussion about detox.
Right.
Mental health crisis improvements in the new hospital. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, in fact, yesterday afternoon, there were about five individuals who attended our, the Pacific Communities Health District Board meeting, and Cheryl Connell from Health and Human Services spoke to the need particularly for alcohol and drug detox. And their request is to consider whether we could create a ten-bed unit, very much, I think, similar to what was the Truman Center in our community a number of years ago. When we started planning our need to replace, we had the Truman Center, you know, in Newport, and when we envisioned the building that we are now planning, we didn't envision the space for that service because it existed. Since then, it's gone away, and we know the need to replace that is acute. Just this morning, at our regional executive meeting, we talked about that very issue and the need to identify where and how we would provide those services or partner with Health and Human Services for those services in each of our communities, because it's called in every part.
Yes, yes.
One of the issues.
So you, there is a move to.
Absolutely.
Integrate that requirement.
Right.
And it's serious budgeted funding.
What we would prefer as an answer is it's not to house those individuals as we occasionally do in our acute care beds in the hospital. That's kind of the most expensive housing or care setting. They're much better housed in something similar to what the Truman Buildings, Truman Center was, you know, maybe a house or other converted facility. Thank you. And, you know, I can't speak for Samaritan, but, you know, we are very aware of this issue, and we would commit resources to create that. Yes, sir.
Sorry, I didn't write down your name.
David.
David.
Mm-hmm.
So I kind of want to understand what we have here in Lincoln County, okay? So you've got the Pacific Communities Health District, okay, and the hospital itself, the infrastructure, that's owned by Pacific Communities Health District.
Right.
Right. Now, these kind of health districts, I'm just, I'm not telling you I know the answer, I'm actually asking the question, so I suspect that these types of health districts don't really exist in, say, the Portland metro. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, in other words, they're hospitals, whether profit or for-profit, and most, I think, these days are nonprofit entities anyway, they compete for businesses, right? But here, so the Pacific Communities Health District, does that mean that the people of Lincoln County actually, or the people that are in this Health District, have a share of ownership in the district?
Yes, in a way or speed.
Okay. So I'm curious, when Pacific Communities leased, gave Samaritan, our current operators, a thirty-year lease, were there other hospitals that were, that they were buying for the lease also?
Well, yes, at the time Samaritan entered into the relationship with the Pacific Communities Health District, they had interviewed four other health systems, Providence, Legacy, and Peace Health. And if those of you may remember, Providence was their original choice back in, I believe, nineteen ninety-nine. And they began, they began negotiating the deal, and they had a deal, but then there was a group in the community that objected to that arrangement, and in two thousand, two thousand and one, they were actually in court at the end of, well, actually, two thousand and one, Providence said, okay.
So, so we're in a lease situation with Samaritan for thirty years, and are, do the Pacific Communities have any performance clauses in, in the contract with Samaritan?
In a way, yes, there was, we refer to it as the wish list, but the district said, we want you to run the facility. Here was our list of services or issues that we'd like you to address, and dealt with, at that time, managed care was very much an issue, in other words, contractual relationships with insurance companies, they dealt with recruitment, they dealt with qualifying the surgical program within the American College of Surgery, qualifying cancer program within the American Cancer Society. The only service that was on that list that they would like us to consider doing that we did not do was radiation therapy. And we looked at it, and we answered that and said, it's a three-million-dollar bite just to get into the business, and even if everybody in Lincoln County that needed it came to that facility, it would lose money every year. So we respectfully did not enter that line of service.
Do the Pacific Communities get a revenue stream from Samaritan as part of this lease?
No. Well, for some of their buildings that have been added in the course of time, we do grant from that.
So one of the, the reason to have this district is because we're a rural community, and without basically supplementing a, an operator like Samaritan and subsidizing, let's call it that, that's really what it is, their ability to come in here and offer services, they're certainly not giving us a break because we live in this district, right?
Right.
Okay. So it's a way for us to have these services available locally, and in some ways, you know, I can see, you know, two edges there, but having these services does improve, available does improve the desirability to live in Lincoln County.
We believe so very much.
Well, I believe so too.
I think.
But I just, you know, the amount that you're asking for, I mean, seems, I mean, with the other bonds that just, you hit a nexus here.
Yeah.
That is going to.
I don't know what you have in mind.
Really hit some private property owners, all private property, everybody, it's not just yours, but several, it's going to, it's all bond issues at once, it's going to be a dramatic increase in everybody's property taxes. Did you think about asking for less than you did?
Well, we basically sized the building to provide the added space and services that we felt were needed, and that resulted in the estimated cost of completion ranging from basically fifty-four to fifty-six million dollars. We did discuss with the district other sources of funding, essentially debt. You could find that there are some of the federal dollars that are available, but it's a loan, it's not grant. The trade-off there is they would pass that debt servicing on to us, and those dollars would then be used to service debt and not to provide more services. So we think that provision of services are more important than servicing debt, but that could be another, that could be an alternative if the bond measure doesn't pass.
Thank you.
What percentage do you think if the bond passes, the hospitals bill, is it going to be just for general care, or how many are still going to go to the other two major hospitals for obstetric care?
Well, right now, it depends on the service, as to how many of our residents receive services outside of our county. The most common are general surgery and orthopedic surgery, where we service less than half of the residents, as opposed to obstetrics, where we serve about eighty-five percent, and internal medicine, it's about eighty percent. So that's a broad category of diseases or issues. Should this pass, with the availability of additional specialists in our community, I would see that the surgical, and we're recruiting a third general surgeon this summer, she'll join us, I would see that that would tip in the favor of the majority being serviced in their place of residence.
So when you say recruit, is that going to be like the one or two days, like the one or two days a year?
Well, some of them are visiting specialists.
Okay.
So it depends on, you know, the volume of need.
Right.
In the community, and as we're seeing with cardiology, they're here, and then, oh, oh, the need just kind of grows.
Right.
So they're asking for more and more time, and I suspect that would happen in other fields as well. We have a meeting next week with the urology group, and they're thinking of kind of the same arrangement as the cardiology group in Corvallis, to send somebody here, and actually share them with North Lincoln, so that both communities benefit, as we do with oncology. We have had an oncologist on the coast for a number of years, he splits his time, two days in Newport, or three days in Newport, two in Lincoln City, he's asking for a second provider now because he's that busy. He's the busiest oncologist in that whole group. Sad to say, but.
I know. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And I will just briefly mention, we are having quite a few other public forums, if you're interested, they're on our website, Neighbors for a New Hospital, we're at the P U D tomorrow evening, Thursday in Seal Rock, back in Newport next week, plenty of opportunity to dialogue some more.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. We're going to move up on the agenda a little bit so our esteemed attorney can get on about his way. We're going to go to finish business, credit card fees, and harbor fuel and boat fueling. So if you would hurry, could you give us an outline of?
Yeah, this is on the agenda, the council has been looking at a surcharge, oh, on credit card, looking into trying to recoup the cost of the credit card fees that have impacted the, I was going to say profit, we've never had a profit to the boats in harbor, so that's not the right word, but trying to, looking at reducing some of the costs associated with selling fuel down in the harbor, and has been looking at the credit card fees. I believe you discussed this briefly at your last meeting, April seventh, I wasn't here, and then scheduled an executive session, which occurred just earlier tonight, so council wants to go from there, and what was discussed earlier this evening, and.
Do we have our council, uh, news, comments?
There was a discussion at any executive session, no decisions were reached, but the history, as I understand it, is that the cost to the city of using the credit card feature for fuel sales at the port ends up costing ten to twelve thousand dollars a year expense. And so the question is, can the county, can the city recapture that in one of several different ways? One way would simply be to add a cost to fuel that would cover that ten to twelve thousand dollars, whatever it would be. The question was, well, can you charge the people that use credit more in order to cover the fees that are paid to the credit card company? And that creates some issues, because at least one company that the county, or I keep saying the county, I'm sorry, that the city has an agreement with explicitly says you can't do that, or you just not do anything and just eat the cost. And so the thought, as I understood from the discussion in the executive session, was that if the rate on fuel was raised by fifteen cents per gallon, more than what it is currently, and you're going to correct me if I say this wrong, that that would cover that gap. And so my advice to the city is that that's something you have the authority to do, unless there's some law that I'm not aware of that would prevent you from doing that, and you have the right, you own the harbor, and you have the authority to make the decisions about what costs and fees are associated with that. And if you want to raise that cost of fuel by fifteen cents per gallon, that is within your authority to do.
Yes, sir.
There were two distinct issues. One was the short term, which is money it costs every year to use credit cards, the other is the long term, because one of the things this council's been focusing on is helping the harbor trim some of the costs and to increase revenue stream. So with that in mind, and on a temporary basis, I'm not sure what it means, yeah. Mr. Mayor, I move that we do raise the cost of gasoline, fifteen cents a gallon to each share repurchased during the harbor.
Could we have some discussion on this? It goes to the methodology.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. It's just, when we, and, did you get all your motion out?
Yeah, I'm good. I have a little, it's just.
Well, part of it, but most of it.
Most of them got out, which is the raising of the gas feature.
So there could be a friendly amendment if necessary.
Yes.
Okay. All right, here's a math, the math here, is if you raise, two different ways of adding things on, by percentage or by flat rate, okay? And what you're proposing is a flat rate, okay, and we're charged, some of the charges and the components that are being charged, our credit card charges are flat rate, but most of them are like three percent of sales or whatever. So there's, I mean, you're always going to be either, not always, but you're either going to be undercharging or overcharging for the mark that you want to reach.
Yes.
Using a flat, a flat fee. In other words, if the bottom dropped out of fuel and it went down to two dollars a gallon, and the percentage of what we're paying on a credit gallon would be, say, what, if it's three cents, it'd be six cents a gallon, if it's four dollars a fuel, it's twelve cents a gallon. So I'm not sure, I'm wondering if there's some way that we could use a percentage instead.
Perhaps, and the reason I picked fifteen cents is for every, for every five cents, based on the amount of fuel that was sold last year, that raises four thousand dollars. So that's why I picked the fifteen cents, because that raises up to twelve thousand dollars. But as I said before, you know, this is temporary, because Steve's very right, we have to look at the whole picture, and this is just something to immediately stop the need in the harbor, and we can revisit, we can do it by percentage, doesn't matter, but this is just a short term, let's get something started to stop losing money, on that respect.
Yes.
Here's what, here's what I would suggest that we do, I agree with Jerome on this, is that we look at this as a preliminary cost recovery only move so that we can start to recover the costs that we're just leaving on the table, and then launch a more detailed analysis of it so that we can see exactly what all the costs are, and potentially in a few months, make an adjustment upward or downward, and then maybe the percentage component becomes a better way to do it at that time. But for now, it sounds to me like the most simplest way is to do fifteen cents on a preliminary, it's a preliminary move to recover costs, right?
Perhaps it sunsets it to.
I think it should be pointed out as well that this is not an increase that is designed to put money into city coffers or anything, what this is, is an offset of credit card transaction fees that the city is already paying, which adds up, you know, little by little to a pretty hefty amount, relatively speaking. So this is just simply to offset that and to make the fuel sales break even, or at least come closer to breaking even rather than creating a wider profit margin, because at this point, my understanding is there is no profit margin, so.
Two things, one thing is that we're governed by the cost of the fuel as it comes out on the market, so whatever that would be, plus the fifteen percent would be that trigger.
So, whatever that would be, plus the fifteen percent would be that trigger, so we wouldn't have to worry about this processing business. The other thing also that we were talking about harbor fueling, and when the motion was made, the board gasoline, but fueling, aren't we talking about the gasoline and diesel boat? So, you're gonna have to change that motion. As far as the percentage is concerned or not, if we feel that that needs to be addressed in the future, we could put that in the motion as well. So, if you'd like to restate it, any more comment on this?
So, it's my second, I guess we could, I would entertain a friendly amendment for a sunset date.
I'm with that. Could you, would you rescind your second? I can seriously, okay. So, how about we do this? I move that we increase the fuel prices, both diesel and gasoline by fifteen cents a gallon. And then, in six months, we review that as the master plan progresses.
Well, six months, yeah, from the day that...
From the day the institute contract, yes. Second.
I don't know if that's, the master plan needs to be in there.
I don't know if the master plan does.
Okay.
I'm just, because we're working the master plan, Matt, his committee and everybody else, so.
Right, so I just, so it's just the fuel.
That's right.
And six months.
And six months.
Of course it is.
Any other discussion?
Well, we're gonna look at, it's a preliminary step, and we're gonna look very closely at all the costs, cost components, from between now and during that city, right? Okay.
So, is there a second on...
Six, yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Go on, please.
Wyatt?
No.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelaw?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Aye.
Now, effective tomorrow morning? I mean, normally that would be the, you made a motion to change it, and so, we would change the prices.
There's been legal backdoings to occur on the momentum of this meeting.
So, six months sunset tomorrow morning?
We've got September 8th.
Yeah, well, it would happen to get the turn of page, so. Schedule.
Well, the thing is, the city is routinely in losing funds, and that's gonna give us a chance to put the city on an even keel with the product users. So, it was a good move from my eyes. Okay, regressing to reports of...
Are you gonna throw me out now? Are you gonna throw me out now?
You may speak as long as you like, sir.
But I'm also happy to.
Or you may use your second.
What may I say?
I think that you've done your job for what was due tonight. Unless you wanna talk about the police car.
I'd love to.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
See you, folks.
Thank you, sir. All right, back to item six, reports of officers, boards and standing committees. We've got something from the Parks Commission, recommendation, stone signs at harbor entrance and scenic view areas. Who is...
I also have a report after this from the solid waste consortium.
I'm sorry, get me here.
I'm sorry, I also have a report to give after this for the meeting from the solid waste consortium last Tuesday.
Okay, great. Mr. Hayes?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor? I believe we've already received this lengthy package. And the Parks Commission is requesting approval to install three scenic view area signs in Deepo Bay Harbor, world's smallest sign, to be placed at the curb of the community hall, as you come around the corner to the harbor, directing people to our harbor. The Deepo Bay Harbor sign would include the already approved logo, Deepo Bay logo approved by city council. The scenic view signs, the lettering would be the same type of lettering that is on the big city sign, only smaller, and a much smaller rock.
It's all good, it's stone.
It won't be, it won't be the fifth rock in the shot. And the lettering on the harbor sign will be the same, Deepo Bay Harbor, the same type, and in a different font below, in quotation marks, "the world's smallest." I have attached, we have attached pricing for the signs and recommended locations that came from the park's master plan, that was approved by council. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Hayes, I do have one or two questions. And it's concerning the placement of the stone in the harbor. You guys, this is a great map. And I looked together, and I couldn't find where you wanna put the sign. I know you said it's on the curb.
Yeah. This is very obvious. And as, as you come around, start to enter the curb, the sign would be placed right, right here, just before the guardrail.
And that's the stone sign, right, Mr.?
Yes.
That's not the placard that's being made the...
No, no. No, that one's now that the harbor and grass area, but... Go first.
Okay, that's what I thought.
This one, we feel quite often, people try to get to our harbor and go straight, past the community hall, off the hill, and have to turn on their back. This sign, we believe, angled properly, will direct them right, the entrance to the harbor. And at the same time, the Parks Commission recommend that for council's approval and review, maybe it'd be a good place to also mount the, so maybe anchor would be next to this sign, as an entrance to the harbor.
That's a good idea. Yeah. So, he wants to put the stone city, city building right there.
The same people that made the big sign and the smaller sign at the park on 101, the old stone, are the same people.
They're not gonna sign that, probably.
Well, it's signed on the back.
There won't be on the top of the sign, no.
The one in the park has their logo right there.
Get it to the back, it's behind it.
No, 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 I'm talking about the one on the 101.
Yeah.
Right next to Tyra's, those stoners do signs.
Right outside.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the one that, that was down on the big park, it was put up, up the area, the sun would be, so.
So, we need a motion on that. I really would need it.
Just a little discussion. I love these signs, and I think that if we found these trails mapped out too, I love the historical signs wherever I go, I stop and read them, I don't have to buy any of them. So, I'm thinking, I'd love to have one of these historical signs out in front of my new building. But I'd have to recuse myself from getting that put in. But thank you for going through this and the rest of the committee to put this together. It's great, it's a real addition to our committee.
Great job. It was the Parks Commission and Larry Lewis combined effort.
Should have been in the interest of doing a, excuse me, a motion correctly. I noticed that it's like between fifty-two eighty-one and sixty-eighty-one, but that would not include the concrete, and we actually have to consider the motion, the concrete and a labor cost, or would that simply be absorbed? It wouldn't function very well.
Actually, it's best if the council can come up with a total cost estimate.
And raise the volume.
Right. The other thing, did you mention that proposed solid waiting, I don't know if you considered that tonight?
Well, that, I put that in for future, possibility of future reference.
So, not to, not request it tonight?
No, just, we thought, once the sign and possibly the anchor was approved, that down the road, we would like to put in a solar light that would light up the sign at night and then go off in the morning. And...
Mr. Lee, do we have the history behind that anchor? And if so, will that be some sort of a plaque to commemorate where it was found, how it was found, what vessel we think it was found?
We could obtain that information from the Tottens and put a sign up on it, similar to that was, that donated sign by Richard Totten on the one down by the...
I knew they were dragging, or what product, I'm not sure, but got caught in the dust. They brought up two of them, and Richard got to bring one of them back to the city. So, if we have a little history of that, that'd really be great.
Okay. I will.
So, what do we, there's only one confusing thing I have here. There's a matrix over here for community hall, ninety-five thousand, and is that for...
And that's the two thousand stairs and all of it.
And then, we're gonna go down all this, just go...
No, we're just going on the stones tonight, correct?
Correct. Okay, the proposal tonight is the five thousand to six thousand?
Yes.
Okay. On the, on the second page, okay.
And it's gonna include a lot of the anchor, which, you know, that's all.
Okay.
So, we did about sixty-three hundred dollars, probably, that's gonna be, that's one guess. That should definitely, okay. So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve up to sixty-three hundred dollars to the Park Bureau to pay for and have placed the two scenic view area and one scenic view area and then harbor sign.
One second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, we're getting the history on the anchor, that sixty-three hundred dollars isn't gonna cover the plaque.
No, no.
So, that's outside of this, we'll have to come back to it.
Especially what you researched.
Yeah.
It would take probably stainless steel mountain and before, that's the one down, depends on how you wanna...
Maybe should we keep it commensurate with the other sign you just did, that really nice harbor history sign, right? That's the one you're talking about, the stainless steel one?
No, the mounting bracket or the anchor. The anchors would be placed similar to the one that's down by the oil center.
Oh, yeah.
Or, I don't know, if you want it standing up or laying down or pointing or, but it'll take stainless steel brackets and some type of history, history sign, that would not, the history sign would not be included in the types of the rock signs, stone signs.
Gold, please.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelaw?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
We're going to, on item, oh, excuse me, getting ahead of ourselves. All right, public comments?
Oh, I still have...
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. You know, go ahead.
Okay, well, I went to the rescheduled meeting of the solid waste consortium, I'm assuming that's the current name, great bunch of people, all very positive. The status of what's going on up there in landfill is that, let's see, I did check some notes. Okay, the next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, June 9th at 2:00 P.M. They have gone from single event monitor, or, no, excuse me, they've gone from twice-a-year event monitoring at the side of the landfill to single event monitoring, that's from the DEQ. Apparently, the leach, leachate, it's, the quality of it seems to be improving. It was not bad to begin with, according to them, because of the fact that there's no heavy industrial manufacturing or things of that nature that would put, you know, highly toxic stuff in there. But the quality of it is improving to the point where the DEQ no longer feels that it's necessary to monitor it twice a year, so they're going to that single event monitoring. And that's a good thing, from what they, you know, the committee discussion was, that that's a very positive step in the right direction, so things are looking good. And the only other thing that's going on up there is that, let's see, the office in the, where they do their recycling, I guess there's a small problem that they're going to be addressing. And the other thing is that they're going to be installing a tower at the top of the landfill, and I do have pictures here for anybody that wants to see. They have purchased a tower that they're gonna be installing up there to test the possibility of wind generation, electricity. So, I've got location maps of where the tower's going to be located. They've purchased the tower as an assembled unit, they're gonna be installing it up there with all of the aviation markers that they need to make sure that, they said it's not gonna, not gonna be a hazard, but they wanna put the markers up anyway, just be, you know, in the interest of safety and nothing else. And that they're going to be reviewing that and seeing if that's anything feasible. I understand also that they have, on the top of that landfill, there was some discussion in the committee, of the fact that they have a really hard time getting anything to grow up there except for scotch grail and blackberries. But, oh, I cannot remember, excuse me, I should have made tape with better notes, but anyway, they're going to be using what they call Newport sledge number one. And apparently, this is very high-grade topsoil that is relocated from other places and is, it's apparently full of grass seed. And they said that stuff will grow a grass anywhere, so they're gonna try and put that up there, up on the top. They're gonna do it carefully because apparently, there's issues with ground stability, you know, because of the fact that it's a cap landfill. But they're gonna be doing it very carefully and spreading that up there to see if they can get some grass to grow up there, instead of just the, you know, the regular stuff that we all deal with.
Do you know what the generation, the same or me?
They have not even gotten to that stage yet, they're just gonna be doing some preliminary reports.
Will it be looking at the main grid?
It, they probably will not be, but I don't know that they've gotten that far. What they're looking at is, is an alternative to, of course, to hydro, to any of the other, you know, electrical generation. I know that a lot of cases for, you know, coal, things like that, they're looking for, you know, cleaner alternatives. They're just looking into that right now as a possibility, so I don't know if they've even gone that far into looking into feasibility studies about what, how much could be generated and where that would be.
So, we're all pretty sure on that.
Yeah, yeah, so they're just in the beginning stages of that, but it looks really promising.
Thank you.
I wasn't here last time to do that local public safety coordinating council update, but what I'd wanna suggest, and that I guess comes in here, but what I'd like to suggest is that there's been some developments that will potentially affect favorably. is that there's been some developments that will potentially affect favorably Depot Bay. And I've invited George Stanton from the Mental Health Advisory Committee to be with us at our next council meeting to talk about those two items. And the two items are, very quickly, is that there are nine school health centers in the, in the high schools and other schools in the county. Since we don't have a school in Depot Bay, the suggestion is that the federal and state and county monies that are available to do that kind of outreach for kids up to eighteen, what they do in the schools is that we might be able to use the neighbors for kids venue, and that may well qualify. So they're gonna, we're gonna talk about that next time. And then the other thing that came up is that they're, they wanna have a move toward having more of an adult outreach facility here in Depot Bay for mental health outreach. And there's a, some plans in motion to, to look at a public-private partnership on that. And they'll be, he'll be in a position to talk about that next time. So we don't need to take it up here, but it, but the point is that some things are happening in the county in the context of mental health. And I think that Depot Bay is looked at as an area that needs coverage. We're kinda isolated out here, and those are the kind of conversations I've been having on behalf of the city of Depot Bay.
Thank you. Any other comment? Okay, on to public comments?
Public, I'm, I'm the chairperson of the staff committee, Sam and Hanson. I'd like to give you guys a brief report. I, I, be you're on Sam and Hanson. I think we have some papers there that I sent out. What I, the intention of that is to do is to prep you people for your, maybe the May fifth meeting. We should have all those costs in of what that dock and fish pen project would be. We'd like to, I would like to have you put us on there as an agenda item at that time with those costs in mind. As this application goes forward, and we're going to ask for some financial support from the city. And at that time, people might want to decide how much you'd like to contribute. I will tell you that in that grant, that it is possible to apply for all the money. But reviewing the grants that I have seen, the success rate is much better. There's different agencies, organizations involved, and they're all doing their part. Both those structures are in bad shape. What Sam and Project has to lose is that project, which, I mean, Depot Bay can't afford to lose that project, honestly. And so I'd like to be on the, Sam and Hanson, be on the agenda for that. It's the May fifth meeting at that time. I'll give you the information, and I would like a resolution from the city council at that time to move forward so we can get this grant application. Your consideration is how much financial involvement the city wants to be involved?
We're going in the budget cycle here in just a week and a half. How about a ballpark, what you need?
The ballparks are there.
So we can use these figures right here?
I, I would think that it, it, it might be something like that. I mean, you can play with, with everything. Generally, when I come in on that, I mean, and that's just, I've had some very positive response. Kind of feeding it down the other way is a ten thousand dollar involvement from the city.
A beanie about the grant application and the participation, the letters of support you've requested.
We, yes, we have. Thank you for bringing that up.
So, so in that letter of support, and with respect to this city of Depot Bay's participation in you're in a more favorable position with that grant application with matching commitments and support, like in-kind support, if there's an educational component involved in the whole thing. If we're looking at the global picture of what the program is gonna do for the, the community, then that, those kinds, that kind of input with in-kind contributions in terms of a venue, like at Neighbors for Kids that are teaching facility, all of that would be considered. Because we do, see, we will, we will, then that will be an in-kind contribution or treated as a matching contribution. We, we can calculate that.
We need all the letters of support that we need. They review this project every five years. And staff probably has on record some of the house support letters that, 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 and basically, in that application, they're going to be looking, well, yeah, is the city gonna grant access to this? It's part of it.
So it's a, it's a partnership kind of story that you need to tell so that they see that the whole community's benefiting from it. So we need to make sure that we help you get that done.
From different organizations. So I'm asking that from the city, and then I'm asking you separately, you know, to whatever this council decides, when I give you those numbers, to feel out some kind of financial commitment for, for this and put it together and save the folks.
Literally anything.
Appreciate it. Work. Any questions?
I think you pretty well covered it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other public comments? The item B of in untouchable business, we're gonna move that ahead to another meeting, preferably the next one, so we can get it handled one way or another. And for the audience, what that is, is that Granite family is still offering their parking lot in the, up on the strip behind the, the recent complex. But we haven't come to a consensus yet how to handle that, to accept it, what the costs are, or any of that. But we, in the next two weeks, one, they figure it out, and we'll, we'll do something about it one way or another. But we do need, we do need parking. Everybody's in agreement on that, so we need to iron the rest of that out. So that's where we are on that. New business. City Council Harbor Commission, Harbor Master Plan Advisory, Committee Joint Need Review and Action Items. Matt, would you like to start that off?
I'm, I'm not prepared to, to comment on that, but, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, what was that, about two weeks ago, we had the webinar, is that right?
I believe it was longer.
We, we actually had an opportunity to visit with the engineers over the internet. And on the screen, we had a rather large packet. And you guys don't have a copy of it, but it's a very large packet. And in this packet, it lays out the work that our engineers have been doing. And one of the comments at the end of the webinar was that Depot Bay needs to, at this point, give the engineers some details, some direction to go in. Because they gave us a scheduled matrix of different kinds of repairs, like wood, concrete, aluminum, steel. And what I'm talking about are the docks. They gave us a whole list of those. They also gave us about eight different configurations of how the new harbor might look for the fishermen down in the harbor. Large bolts are put here, small bolts are here, so on and so forth. But the engineer at this point is waiting for Depot Bay to get back to him on a little direction. Is it gonna be wood? Is it gonna be concrete? Is it gonna be exhibit one B or whatever might be in this packet? And so I asked her to, she's gonna spin these copies up, and we're gonna get them, hopefully, to the Harbor Commission for their meeting on the twenty-ninth, is that right?
The Harbor Commission's next meeting is a little bit over a week away, on the twenty-ninth.
On the twenty-ninth. And we're hoping to get this pack into their hands and then ask them to review it so that when they come into the Harbor Commission next week, they can sit down and they can come to some kind of consensus to give us feedback so we can give the engineers feedback. And so that's what this comment was about, is to get the Harbor Commission working on this.
I would also invite, ask the council for any comments you have.
Yeah.
That, that we're hoping to feed all these comments, all this feedback to the engineers by meeting, so they can go back to work. They're waiting on us at this point.
For the, the engineering of the
Docks to twenty-four.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, I'd like to go back to the minutes from the joint meeting with Harbor Commission and Harbor Master Plan. I have a couple of thoughts on that. The, the larger thoughts that I have about this, as a, as a new city councilor, it was an honor to moderate that session. In my mind, it was one of the most productive meetings that I've participated in in a long time. And I was really thrilled with the action items that came out of it. But the most important thing I've gotta say about it is that, for the first time, as a new city councilor, I have a global view of a harbor. And it, it's not in bits and pieces anymore. I can see a picture of the entire harbor project in one, in one large frame. And Jerome took me on a tour over his new building, and I was able to look over across and, and connect a lot of dots. And what, what I learned from this, and I, I think others have, I've gotten input on this, is that we should stick to having an overall plan, like the master plan. It really reinforces the master plan. It really reinforces that we should look at the bigger picture of what's going on. And maybe this is the interim piece of that. But we should make sure that we discipline ourselves and, and work through the process here to follow through with all these action items. And I'm not quite sure how that's gonna roll out. And I was hoping that we could discuss that a little bit, or anybody have some ideas on how we're gonna? I don't wanna see these, these minutes gathered dust somewhere. I think we need to, I, I, I think we need to make a commitment to, to make sure we work with the work groups, make sure we follow up on the action items, continue to move this forward. Because if we let it sit somewhere, it, it just will become another document that everybody forgets about. Jerome?
Well, Matt's being a little shy there. We had Harbor Master Plan Committee meeting on Thursday, was it?
Sure.
And we did throw a direct Larry Lewis to help us out. He's done, he's done master plans for other types of projects. And so he's gonna, he, he tried to move this, this project forward. He's gonna rough out, do we, do we have any minutes from that meeting here?
No.
Okay, that's all right. But he's gonna help us rough out and identify the things that we need to do to move this plan and, and finish it.
Okay.
To get it in the books. I, I, I just, we just, we as a group felt like he could, because of his experience with other master plans and, and seeing them through, to their, to their end. And that, he's, he's, he works for us. He's, he's a resource that
So he's the leadership project manager type?
Yeah.
Who can help us with this?
Yeah, and get, and, and including with the, helping, you know, direct this engineering part. Of course, we need to, that's probably one of the more important. And we did, we did make some modifications to a couple of things that were on the plan that came up at the, the joint meeting that we thought didn't belong in the plans. We all agreed on two items that really the, we civilians don't have any power to, to make changes to. And that was the A S N navigation. The buoy placement out here, is that something that we can initiate again? I understand from the city that we contacted the, the Coast Guard. I think they're in charge of A S N navigation. They, they service all the buoys. Maybe we need to do that again, but there's nothing we could do as a city. In fact, if we hired a private contractor to go and move that buoy where we thought we would, somebody'd end up in jail. It's just not allowed. So then the, so we moved that off, off the, off the list.
Handle it separately.
Okay. And then the, the, the wall.
The sea wall stabilization.
The sea wall stabilization. Because at least at the interim right now, the Corps of Engineers has ownership over that. They repaired it once. They say it's not moving. Let's give them a chance to, to come back and look at it again. And they may or may not be able to do something, but they've got ownership over that, that sea wall. So we move, we move that off the, the master plan for, for right now. Is that right? Does that sound right to you, Matt?
Well, those, yeah, we moved it off the Hi-Fi project list, not the master plan.
Okay. Okay, I think I Those two items, we can all agree on that.
I think, I think I understand where this is going. You folks are all ahead of me. You've answered my question. This is a, this document's already in motion.
Right. Mr. Mayor, could we have, can we direct the staff to get this packet to the Harbor Commission now? I mean, that, that meeting's only week away, and they really need to study this on the
I already informed a few of the members that that would be fourth coming. So please write that up and make sure that the Harbor Commission gets it.
We'll do that tomorrow.
And the rest of our members own. Is everybody on Hi-Fi, have this as well?
Yeah.
Now, all of you, I have a good question. City Council, my understanding, you all got a copy of that package?
I think I have, I have records.
Like it was distributed by that package, I mean, the blue stuff?
Which is the printouts of the slides from the webinar? So you have that. So please, take a look at it. Any comments you have, feed them to staff. Because like I say, what we're hoping to do, we have a contract with this engineering firm. We don't want them sitting on their hands.
Right.
So what we're hoping to do is provide the city council feedback, Harbor Master Plan Advisory Committee folks, and the Harbor Commission, if they can meet, you know, discuss it and come up with something at their meeting next week and get it to the
It has, it has a lot of really good technicals, yeah, material. And while I've got the chair here, or the floor here, on that buoy out there, I wanted to let everybody know what, what's going on with that. In the recent past, our navigation was done by Loran, long-range navigation. And that was done with radio waves, and we weren't using a satellite. So those buoys were placed on our charts, one of the oceanographic charts, at that time, using the Loran waves. Well, they are by fault off as much as fifty feet sometimes. So I'm pretty sure that that buoy was placed with the Loran navigation. And now it's been replaced on, on that chart with satellite navigation. So that's, that's something that the NOAA's gotta figure out. And if we stay on and, and try to get them to understand that that buoy was once in a, in its proper place by our old navigation and kept us off of the proper place by our old navigation and kept us off of the flat rock for one thing, which is a really dangerous part of the entrance. So anyway, I just wanted to let everybody know why that buoy is sitting where it's sitting and that it just hasn't been brought up to date with the old navigation chart system and our satellite. So, and then on the seawall, Kate Grove is going to be here and tour the harbor. And at that time, I'll make sure that if anybody just wants to go along with that tour, we can sure hold their hand and take her over and have her look right over the seawall. But you know who Kate Grove is?
No.
She's the director for our Corps of Engineers here in Coos Bay. So she'll be here on the, on May 11th, Monday, May 11th. So that'd be a good time to get with her on that seawall thing. Okay, go ahead.
So I just want to repeat what I think I heard. And I'm happy with that. So the Harbor Master Plan Advisory Committee is, looks like it's taken the leadership role with Larry Lewis on these action items for Hi-Fi. Now, is that, is that, am I right on that?
No, what we did in the last meeting, and I may have clarified Jerome just a little bit here, Larry Lewis and Brady are working together to put together a two-page document so that we can bring a request for an RFP for the city council to act on, to bring in a project, a marine engineering firm to put together the master plan, which was always the intent of the Harbor Master Plan Advisory Committee to be involved. So we're just, we're moving forward on that piece to bring in a professional to take over the master plan piece of the project.
But what about the high priority projects here? How's that been on?
That's still progressing under the, under the aegis of the Master Plan Advisory Committee.
Oh, okay. So, so we still have, the concept is that we have some near-term priority projects that are going to move forward and then, and it's all going to be in the context of the larger Harbor Master Plan.
Correct.
Yes. I discussed that with Larry about two weeks ago, and he told me it would take a little time, but he wouldn't get it done.
Okay.
So he's going to include all these projects, all these points all the way.
Dilapidated warp and...
Yeah.
Waste oil states, all that stuff. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Yes.
Before we move on to the next item of business, we had some discussion earlier about the Harbor Master Plan Advisory Committee joint, or the committee is, has a vacancy?
Well, that's right. She's right, we need to talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, you're correct. We lost a member to move to a different town, Maggie.
Thomas.
So...
So we need to vacate that seat as a council, is that correct?
Yes. And I just want to, you know, appointments are made by motion, so declaring the seat vacant would be a by motion. And if you want to direct staff...
So you could get to advertise and go to the...
Yeah, direct staff to do what you'd like to do.
I move that we declare Maggie Thomas's seat vacant and direct the staff to advertise for candidates to appoint to that seat.
One second.
Go, please.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Now, thank you for bringing that up. Freddie, does Freddie need to be here for the bid award?
No, we also got a copy of the Civil West Engineering Services Recommendation Award.
So it's Civil West on the... No, I didn't choose. I gave mine to, I'd like to acknowledge that Matt Baines, the chairperson of the running Beach Shore District, gets here with us tonight and he's got a big thumb up. That has to do with the ice project that we're getting started on.
That looks like it has a yes, Brad.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bid funding Civil West's recommendation for $170,523 to Devil's Lake Rock for the Vista Main Repair Project.
My second.
Call, please.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
With a tear in my eye, yes. Why do I get that card?
So maybe we'll get a Dodge Charger or something.
Oh, now you're going to go with my bid at first. I'll give you my bad card.
Some of the sheriff's cards are nice one.
On to correspondence.
I don't have any correspondence. So, somebody has a question or something?
Oh, Sonny Buehler, David. Yeah, do we need to...
Oh, that, I was going to look for the mayor to give us staff reports and we have a memo from Brady on that. I guess I don't consider staff manuals correspondence.
Well, we, we need to act on that, right?
He would really appreciate it, yes.
Where is Sonny Buehler? It's up by where Joe lives.
Yeah, it's one block down from where I live. When you get up to the top of Collins Street, there's...
You were Howard House.
Yeah, yeah, it's not quite that far down. There's, there's two right-hand turns, so it would be the first one, Sonny Buehler and then Ray and then...
That is great, and they've locked it forever, yeah.
You know, the flooding in that area is just terrible. I know that one of our neighbors had to have, he had to do some major repairs because I guess the water, they tried to divert the water that comes down the hill up there and it ended up going through his yard as it was underwriting the foundation and it flooded on that corner particularly in this area.
Brady discussed that problem with me and by paving it, they can take, share that problem, that's a big problem.
Brady here says he wants to rob people and pay Paul to do it. I mean, that's what he's suggesting, which is okay. Because Vista Street, we had planned to do the Vista Street Forest Main Project and overlay before the next budget year, but it looks like that's going to come in the next budget year. So what Brady is suggesting is we take some of the money that was approved for that overlay and, which is...
Five thousand.
Five thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars and put that towards this problem with Sonny, Sonny Buehler.
Brady would take care of it.
Do you want to make a motion then?
Yes.
Okay, well then, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approved the reapportioning of the funds to pave Sonny View and reserve the rest of the balance of that toward the Vista Street for future occasion.
Need to add a price.
And approved the bid of...
Five thousand seven.
Five thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-two cents. And I'll say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's seven.
Call, please.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
With a tear in my eye, yes. Why do I get that card?
So maybe we'll get a Dodge Charger or something.
Oh, now you're going to go with my bid at first. I'll give you my bad card.
Some of the sheriff's cards are nice one.
On to correspondence.
I don't have any correspondence. So, somebody has a question or something?
Oh, Sonny Buehler, David. Yeah, do we need to...
Oh, that, I was going to look for the mayor to give us staff reports and we have a memo from Brady on that. I guess I don't consider staff manuals correspondence.
Well, we, we need to act on that, right?
He would really appreciate it, yes.
Where is Sonny Buehler? It's up by where Joe lives.
Yeah, it's one block down from where I live. When you get up to the top of Collins Street, there's...
You were Howard House.
Yeah, yeah, it's not quite that far down. There's, there's two right-hand turns, so it would be the first one, Sonny Buehler and then Ray and then...
That is great, and they've locked it forever, yeah.
You know, the flooding in that area is just terrible. I know that one of our neighbors had to have, he had to do some major repairs because I guess the water, they tried to divert the water that comes down the hill up there and it ended up going through his yard as it was underwriting the foundation and it flooded on that corner particularly in this area.
Brady discussed that problem with me and by paving it, they can take, share that problem, that's a big problem.
Brady here says he wants to rob people and pay Paul to do it. I mean, that's what he's suggesting, which is okay. Because Vista Street, we had planned to do the Vista Street Forest Main Project and overlay before the next budget year, but it looks like that's going to come in the next budget year. So what Brady is suggesting is we take some of the money that was approved for that overlay and, which is...
Five thousand.
Five thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars and put that towards this problem with Sonny, Sonny Buehler.
Brady would take care of it.
Do you want to make a motion then?
Yes.
Okay, well then, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approved the reapportioning of the funds to pave Sonny View and reserve the rest of the balance of that toward the Vista Street for future occasion.
Need to add a price.
And approved the bid of...
Five thousand seven.
Five thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-two cents. And I'll say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's seven.
Call, please.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
All right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
from, uh, our Harbor Master Plan Advisory Committee and, and the High Fly, uh, priorities, the whole deal, and we're going to put together a portfolio of, as such, and a proposal, can have the engineering costs and all that kind of stuff. It's gonna be a sales pitch.
That's pretty much it.
Okay, so, I get it.
We can make a spreadsheet should they have the money or not.
Well, the other thing is, we need to be able to quantify it.
Right.
That's right. That's what I'm talking about. Quantify it, uh, with costs and, and justification, so it's really a business plan of our harbor needs that we're gonna take there and present.
That's correct.
Okay. And then all that, that work, uh, is started.
Yes.
Uh, as, as we've been talking about here. All right?
Um, yeah, I, I just, uh, ready, uh, let's give the emails. Like, are, are, Mayor, and, uh, are you asking us to, uh, to vote on funds for this trip tonight?
Uh, I'm asking for authorization of those funds, and we'll find out what that amount will be when we get it, get this thing put together.
Can I, can I just...
Yeah, go ahead.
It's just, I'm reading this, and the, the way I understand it, uh, this money is, is being budgeted right now, or has been, for two thousand seventeen, and, uh, or sixteen, seventeen, and it's very narrow, I mean, uh, in, in scope, and I think we, from the previous budget of the same revenue stream, didn't we, isn't that what we dredged the harbor with?
That, you know, harbor maintenance, yeah. That is what funded the core dredging of the harbor.
So, um, until, I mean, personally, I've, uh, I'm, I'm not ready to authorize those funds until, I mean, I've, to vote for it, until we get some more clarity, uh, of, and when, when that's gonna be. When, when planning the trip, and, and what, what exactly is it going to be for? I've been advised by, uh, uh, by, actually, the Kevin Greenwood, Port Newport, that, you know, we need to narrow our focus, and that a lot of these, a lot of these pitches or applications could be made from here and not have to go to Washington, I presume.
I was gonna ask, if, if the council would schedule this issue for the very next council meeting agenda, in that time, we could come up with a cost estimate of, of what it would, so two people, the mayor and the council president, we can come up with a, a cost estimate for the council, because that's what the travel expense policy is, is that when the council authorizes it, they're authorizing a dollar a month for, for specific travel. So we can certainly come up with a cost estimate, airfare and, um, lodging. We can ask Ray to stand at his house.
Yeah, and he, he specifies that he will, uh, uh, there'll be more information on the way, what we need to do, so we're gonna have some guidance to, to this thing. But if we don't, if we don't bite the bullet now and take advantage of this, it isn't gonna happen. That's the way I see it, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
My, my issue is, and I'm, I'm come from a different background, uh, and not city government, but I do have a, a vision about how to put things like this together so that they're effective, and, uh, it seems that we should, if there's a sense of urgency on this, it seems as though we should be having a little work group...